Nick, if you want to do a sound test, Pete's ready for you.
Thank you very much, Ben. Good evening. How do I sound if I speak in New York?
Sounds good to me.
Excellent. Thank you, Pete.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. It is now 7:00 PM and we are live online.
Ben, I heard you, but I don't think anybody else did.
Hint, hint. Thank you, Amber.
That's better.
Good.
D mark.
We can hear you now.
I didn't hear it before.
No, it was very, it was very, very quiet.
We're just yakking away at 7:00. Good evening, everybody. So as Amber has succinctly pointed out, it's after 7:00. It's 7:01. Can you imagine? So this is a workshop. As almost all of you know, workshops are one where the council preps for its next formal meeting. And we do the talking and you all don't generally. But welcome for those who are here. And then let's get started. So our first item on the agenda is accessory apartment.
You're going to do a roll call, Mayor?
I will do a roll call, yes. So in person, I see Jeff, Amber, the mayor, Pam and George. I see the city administrator. Do we have anyone online?
Molly Rhodes is here.
Hey, Molly. And...
Mayor Nick Ward-Willis, Kingdom Beach City Attorney.
Hey, Nick. Okay, so...
And also city planner Natalie Quinn is on.
Yep. Thanks, Nick. And Natalie Quinn from KRC Planning.
Well, that's good because you're going to take on the first topic with Nick.
Yeah.
And Paloma Walker is excused.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's right. So Paloma is traveling and excused. All right, so that gives us our role. And I said, our first item is accessory apartment regulations. We're looking at some amendments. I don't know if Nick or Natalie, which one of you is going to start up?
I can go ahead and get started. So I believe council members have the memo in front of them, but if not, just let me know and I can kind of share my screen as we walk through this. As a reminder, at the January 27th meeting, or workshop meeting of the council, we continued the discussion that we've been having regarding potential zoning changes aimed at improving housing availability and affordability in the city of Beacon. And where we landed at the end of that last conversation is I think potential updates to ADUs was identified as a priority and kind of a low-hanging fruit since we have regulations on the books. And there might be minor tweaks that we could make to this to both make the process easier and more affordable for Beacon residents and also complement the plus-one ADU program that the city was recently approved, had their application approved by New York State Homes and Community Renewal. So with that, we prepared a memo that is kind of a decision tree. Just what it does is basically walk us through the various regulations that are currently in the code for the city of Beacon to consider where we may want to amend some of those to make the process more user-friendly and easier to utilize for properties in the city. So I can walk through that. I think the one other thing you have in your packet I want to point your attention to, we did have a memo from Bruce Flower, building inspector, just at the end of January before he left, giving us kind of an accounting of fees that are associated with going through the approval process, both the planning board review as well as building permit review for ADUs. And then also kind of an accounting of the number of units that we've seen go through that process over the past two years, which is a pretty small number of just four, four ADUs since 2022 that, that he had in his records. I'm sure there's more before that, but that was the timeframe he looked at. So with that, I guess if anyone has any questions, I can take those. Otherwise, we'll just jump into the decision tree memo and start making our way through, through those questions, those prompts.
Okay.
Great. So I think it's important to kind of remind as we go through these, I think it's good to set the tone of kind of restating the intent as it's codified for accessory apartments and why the city adopted those in the first place. So I'll just read real quickly for the code. It is the purpose and intent of allowing accessory apartments on all existing single-family properties in all residence districts and the transitional district to provide the opportunity and encouragement for the development of small rental housing units designed to meet the special housing needs of single persons, couples and other small households, the young, the elderly person, the elderly persons of low and moderate income, and relatives of families presently living in Beacon. That's a very long sentence. That was all one sentence. It is further purpose and intent of this provision to allow the more efficient use of cities' existing stock of dwellings and accessory buildings to provide economic support, support for present residents, resident families of limited income, and to otherwise help to protect and preserve property values. So I think, you know, summarizing that, kind of the intent is the provision of housing for smaller household units as well as highest and best kind of utilization of existing land and keeping the footprint of development kind of contained to already developed areas. So the first question is, it notes that accessory apartments are currently permitted in all R1, RD and T districts. And the question posed is whether or not the city would want to expand the districts where ADUs are permitted. For example, you know, one-family attached and semi-detached structures are also permitted in the linkage district and the Fishkill Creek district. So the question is posed is whether the city would want to permit accessory apartments on single-family lots in those districts as well. And then I guess the other question not posed here is whether the city would want to expand to other districts beyond those. So that's, that's the first question. I don't know if council members have thoughts on that.
Yes, I'll start on that one. So I believe in opening up the ADUs. And so my general view would be to say to permit it everywhere with some exceptions. And so I guess I'd be interested to know, is it permitted when the single, when the single family, the residential structure is a townhouse or a semi-attached or a two-family? Or is it only for a one, an R1 that it would be permitted? Now, for a single-family structure? Don't worry about the zoning. Let's worry about the structure for a moment. Right? Because I think I'm okay saying if it's an attached project, for instance, like Sycamore, where that one you'd say, well, those are already pretty tight and dense and you may not want an ADU in the middle of a development like Sycamore. If you have an existing two-family, you might say, on a lot, you might say, well, that already has two. It doesn't need an ADU. But I would think that everywhere that there is a single-family structure, that I'd be okay with an ADU. And I'm just putting out ideas because I like to discuss. I'm not sure I've fully formed my views, but let's start there if that's okay.
So you're saying everywhere, on every lot with a detached, single-family home?
Correct. That the attached, single-family home and whatever accessory structures could support an ADU. But if the residential structures are already at least two on the lot, then you'd say no to that.
Yeah. And that's kind of similar to what the city of Kingston has done, right? They don't really specify what districts ADUs are permitted in, but they say they're permitted on all single-family residence lots, right? So you kind of, if there's a existing single family that maybe is existing non-conforming in some zoning district, you could still do it theirs, right? As long as the primary use of the lot currently is single-family.
Oh, okay. Yeah, that's what I'm thinking.
Yeah, I think that makes sense as well. I guess my question is, was there, does anyone remember the reasoning behind not having it in the L and the FCD districts when we drafted this originally? Or can you, Natalie, can you think of any reason why we shouldn't?
So if I recall, if I can help, those districts were assumed to be multifamily structures. But that doesn't mean that there isn't a single-family home, a single-family structure in those zones. And this is saying if there is a single-family structure in those zones, that would be permitted in that structure.
Yeah, that makes a lot of sense to me.
It makes a lot of sense.
Everybody good?
Yep.
Okay. So it's slightly different than what we've been thinking, right? But I think it's the right approach. And apparently Kingston's done the same thing. Okay, cool.
Okay. Second question is regarding whether the city is satisfied with the requirement that the owner of a single-family home lot must reside in either the primary or the accessory unit on said lot, right? So one of the two units has to be occupied by the owner of that, of that lot. This prevents, you know, landlord situations where it's a non, non-owner occupied unit. Maybe they're renting the main primary structure and then also creating an ADU to rent that as well. So I think, again, just kind of background here, I think traditionally many, many communities, Beacon is definitely not the only one that has limited, limited ADUs to properties with, with the owner, with the owner residing on site. I think we've started to see some communities chip away that slightly, right? Just because mostly focusing more on trying to provide as much rental housing as possible, right? That's kind of one of the goals stated in the intent of the code is to provide rental housing. And that can be provided, I think, whether the owner resides on site or not. But I think there's obviously many who still push for that retention of that regulation to ensure that kind of the single-family homeowner nature of the neighborhood kind of remains the same. So I guess the question is whether the council would want to consider removing that requirement for owner occupancy in one of the units right now.
I do struggle with this being a requirement, like just kind of thinking about this. You know, I certainly don't think we want to permit short-term rentals here, so I'm not going there at all. And I do think that it's important to have a, to think about our stock of homeownership versus rental. It feels like we have kind of a lot of rentals. I don't, I don't know if that's the case. I don't know that we have the data to really prove that. But I feel like at the end of the day, I'm not sure I really care if they're rentals or owned. And I'm not sure why I would.
Yeah, I can tell you historically why we did it. And Chris, you were around for this. We were, we were eliminating the ability to convert single-family homes to multifamily in certain sections of town because it was basically, they were turning into not just twos, but fours and fives, and they were in very narrow streets. And so one of the trade-offs was to permit the accessory unit, accessory apartment is what we called it?
We call it accessory apartments.
Accessory apartment in the code, which we did almost 30 years ago. And we required owner occupied. And we were thinking, you know, we wanted a senior to be able to stay in their house, things like that. I'm okay requiring it. I think the difference would be whether, you know, I hear you, Amber. It's not necessary. It might provide for a better neighborhood. But that's, I think, the only issue I can see.
Yeah, and I feel like that argument is kind, kind of saying that like renters don't provide a stable neighborhood. And I don't, I don't think that's necessarily the message. I don't know. I just feel like this one, I, I, I don't know that it really matters to me.
I'm pretty strong that I feel like it should be owner occupied. And even just looking back at the stated intent of accessory apartment, it's to provide economic support for present resident families of limited income. So I mean, the whole intent is owner occupied.
Yeah. I do worry about the trend of like, you know, people just buying something up and putting two rental units on to make a profit. So again, I'm perfectly comfortable with this either, either way.
There are a lot of people who've done that and who don't live in Beacon. So, and it is, has been a concern of mine.
Yeah, I agree as well. I think although adding to the housing stock and rental availability is an important thing, I don't think it's a priority in terms of the intent of this law.
Right.
So, and I believe that it should be designed primarily for existing homeowners to make it more affordable for them. So I agree as well.
I lean towards that as well, but curious if it's possible to have a optional pathway, kind of like a special use permit? Is there an application process where somebody could apply? It's not an as-of-right. They can't just do it without going through a process where there'd be some evaluation about the applicant as a potential off-site landlord?
We could do that.
You've, you've actually had that. You had a variance come to the ZBA of somebody who bought a single-family home and then wanted to build an ADU. And I don't think they got the variance. I don't recall the outcome, but I remember that coming before the board.
I mean, it might have been the case where neighbors expressed concern. I mean, not saying anything on this particular case, but it would be the process where you had to get the variance. And there would be some input that people could have and have some control over their neighborhood in a broader way, which is one of the issues about ADUs, is the neighborhood character.
So if we wanted, and help me out, Nick, if we wanted to, could we specify that a variance to the owner occupancy has a lower, has the use, has the area variance standard in ZBA as opposed to the use variance standard? Could we do that?
We do not have the authority to do that now.
So what I was suggesting was, an area variance is an easier standard to get a variance on than a use. And this is a use, right? We're going from a one to one plus an ADU. I was wondering if we could specify a lesser standard, and apparently we can't. Is there another approach we could take to kind of permit it where it seems appropriate that someone makes a decision? So it wouldn't be a variance. It would be a planning board or something else?
Yeah, I think to Dan's recommendation, that would be maybe making it a special permit use with additional kind of considerations, right? So it would go to the planning board still. It wouldn't necessarily, it's not not permitted. But Nick, I'll let you weigh in on that. I don't know if that's language we could add that would just make it specially permitted and not require a use variance.
Right. It's, it's, it's saying that it's more likely than not to be granted so long as they can meet certain criteria that you set forth for the issuance of the special use permit. So it's not, it's a, it's a lower standard because it's deemed permitted and they just need to check a couple of boxes.
How would the decisions be made? You know, what kind of restrictions could we put on that? And, you know, is...
Well, parking, density in the neighborhood, perhaps, things of that nature. We'd have to come up with some criteria that could be objectively applied uniformly across the districts.
So let me make a suggestion. I, I current, just my own current view is I would lean against removing the owner occupied restriction now. And then we could view it in a couple of years and see what we think is going on.
Yeah.
I don't know if that's okay with everyone, but that would be another option.
I'm fine with that.
The one question, and Nick, this would probably be to you, for owner occupied, excuse me, if it was for what some of the older people do, like have a life estate on their house where maybe the children are the owners, but they can live in it, would that be still considered owner occupied?
I'd like to pull up the definition. I believe we did carve out trust and sort of other estate planning issues as being counted as owner occupancy. But I can look at that.
Okay. Because I think that would be important to make sure that would be allowed. And I wasn't even thinking of just like, it's just in the name of a trust, that maybe the trustees or the grantor would have to be the owners, owner occupied?
Now, I'll take a look at that while we're on this, see if I can get back to you on that.
I mean, I'm generally interested in input, the data that's not necessarily reflected. It's good to see the data that's in that memo from Bruce. But, you know, I'm surprised to see only four approved ADUs. But I'm curious and challenging, I understand, unless we set up a formal process about people who've asked about, applied for, you know, a certain threshold, not just minimum, just like had a casual conversation. But input, like do we, are we getting requests from people in the different zoning areas? Are we getting requests for rental units that they're just not proceeding? Just to, just to gauge the levels of interest as we go forward in time?
I mean, I'll tell you anecdotally, I've spoken to at least three people that have been interested in applying for ADUs and have either like not done it because they weren't really sure what the rules were, or...
Was it cost prohibitive?
Cost prohibitive, or they like called the building department and then it was confusing. And we're kind of like waiting to see if there's a path forward that makes it not as difficult. So...
Yeah, I've had three people in the last week reach out to me regarding this plus-one program as well, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm just curious, going from anecdotal to formally understanding the demand and the character of the demand.
Well, you're, the person who would be able to provide us anecdotal judgment is listening to this, to your comments right now, assuming that we appoint the person. So that's good. Okay, so this is a really good conversation. Let's keep going because we're digging right at the issues that affect, you know, both cost and neighborhood and other things. You want to keep going, Natalie?
Yep, absolutely. So third question on the memo is, I guess we can skip this one for now, but just keep it in mind for if we return to this conversation is, based on the responses above, if any property owner can build an accessory apartment, regardless of owner occupied, does the city want to set restrictions? So that's kind of what we were going through. And we can kind of continue to note, right now, I think I have traffic and kind of neighborhood character. We could kind of build what those would be. So jumping down to number four, accessory apartments are currently regulated by a minimum square foot requirement of 200 square feet. Does the city feel this requirement is necessary? It should be noted that New York State Building Code also regulates the minimum size of dwelling units. So, you know, I included this one because basically this letter goes through every stipulation, right? So we just have a chance to talk about everything that's in the code and, and discuss it. And this is one, I think, to maybe Amber's point about just removing information that's not necessary or to try and make it as clear and succinct as possible. I don't know if this requirement is necessary. Again, I'll stop citing city of Kingston, but kind of they removed it just because there's other, there's other aspects that control the minimum size of a dwelling unit when you're going for a building permit. So whether or not we want to keep 200 square feet in here in the city's code.
And this would only be relevant for a one-person living unit. New York State law requires a minimum of 150 square feet of total living space for one occupant. And then it's an additional 100 additional square feet for each subsequent occupant. So you just, you'd be knocking 50 off for a studio apartment.
You're saying if we left this topic blank, New York State law would control...
It goes to New York State, yeah. You're just a little above New York State.
I think it should just be what the New York State code is, because if that code then changes, we don't have to change ours, and I think the state building codes have historically kind of been our foundational component.
Yeah.
Good with that.
Yep, that sounds right.
Yeah.
OK. Number five is a question regarding whether the city is satisfied with the maximum, right now, there's a maximum 1,000 square foot requirement for accessory apartments, so you can't go over 1,000 square feet, but as the code stands, the planning board does have the authority to permit larger apartments in an existing accessory building that is larger than 1,000 square feet, right? So if you have an existing building that is larger and you want to reutilize that, the planning board has the ability to consider that as long as it's been around for more than five years. You didn't just build a very big garage and then come back and then try to apply for a building permit for that garage, right? It's kind of an existing structure. So there is some authority to go over that, that number. Again, I don't know how often, this would be a question for the building department, how often this stipulation gets questioned. I find that the few applications that have come before the planning board are usually on the smaller side. I haven't necessarily seen someone come up against this threshold, but it's a question worth considering.
Not directly related to this, but tangentially related to it is, the size of the ADUs are that you could put on your property, it's determined by a percentage of what the existing primary structure is. It ranges from 40% to 50%, and I'm wondering if that, if we want to reconsider eliminating that, I just don't understand why it's there in the first place.
Well, I think, again, historically, I think we were trying to make the accessory apartment, this is the 30-year-ago law, one bigger, one smaller, and it was OK if the owner lived in the smaller one and rented out the bigger one. But the theory was, oh, we don't want it to be a two-family. I don't know if that's relevant, and I think you're raising that question.
Yeah, I think because, like, you know, if we go back to the affordability question, is what if someone has a small house on their property, and the property is big enough with setbacks, et cetera, et cetera, and they want to build a bigger ADU and rent out the smaller unit? So I just don't, so I think we should consider eliminating that.
And that percentage, I think, came out of your code at some point. And Nick, can you speak to that? I'm looking at our accessory apartment section 223241.
Yep, I have that up, Bruce.
I don't see that it has the minimum square footage, but I don't see that it has, at least in this part of the code, the breakdown of, well, it can't be more than 30 or 40 or...
It doesn't say that, no, it's just...
Attachment three, it's in the table that's attached to my memo.
OK, it's in the table, thank you.
Buildings on residential lots, that's where it comes in, so it's not stated in the year.
In the table, thank you.
So George, I think where you were going was you would not only just pull all the maximum items, right? The 1,000 and the 40% item.
Yeah.
I'm OK with them. And again, it doesn't mean that they'll become bigger, most of them won't, but it's just one less restriction in case we get it wrong.
Just curious, by the conversation we had about square footage per person, is there a maximum occupancy?
No.
Not in the code, but again, I believe that's defined by New York State code that would set forth occupancy per square footage.
So it's in the, sorry, Nick, you're a little muffled. Are you saying it's in the state code?
Correct. The New York State Building Code would provide how many people can occupy a unit based upon its square footage.
OK.
Questions in the code that I think would, would in some ways regulate, like, how big, how much building you can have on your site, right? There is a maximum percent building coverage for zoning districts. The only thing worth keeping in mind there, I think, is that the linkage district in the FCD, which we just decided you could have a single-family lot in there and they could have an ADU, those are the only two districts without this maximum percent building coverage. But, for example, all the residential lots in the T District where accessory apartments are currently permitted, they are also regulated by the amount of land that can be covered per lot, right? So you are going to regulate the footprints of both your primary structure and your accessory structure in some way through that requirement as well.
Yeah, thanks for calling that out, Natalie. When the idea of both, I'm fine with getting rid of the percentage, but doing that in conjunction with also getting rid of the maximum size, I do then have questions about, are we essentially getting around our own subdivision laws when you subdivide a larger lot because you can fit two full-size houses on them? And so I want to make sure that we're not inadvertently setting, if we want to do that, we should do that probably not through ADU regulations. So that's kind of the concern that I have in my head. I'm not saying that 1,000 feet is the right maximum size, but if we're talking about ADUs, I think that has a thought in people's minds about what that means, and I don't want to inadvertently set it up to be something else. We've certainly seen more and more development, too, go with people are maximizing the maximum amount of house they can get on the lot, and I think I would want to be cautious about increasing that throughout our community.
Kingston also has 1,000 square feet, and it has to be less than 50% of the square footage of the primary unit.
So I can give you another option that may work, too. Another one might be that if the dwelling, the accessory, the ADU is, say, bigger than the existing structure, has to go to site plan. Otherwise, then you leave it to the planning board and you give them some discretion, right? And it could be that it makes sense if it's a really big lot, or for whatever reason, but it also could mean it doesn't make sense somewhere else. We could give discretion to the, you know, the head of the building department, but maybe this is one of the ones you'd say goes to site plan, over a certain size.
Kind of, I think that makes sense, but whatever we decide tonight, will this go before the planning board for them to review?
So the next steps would be that Natalie and our office would prepare a local law, you would workshop that one more time. Once you're satisfied, you would then introduce the local law and refer to the zoning, the planning board and make county for review and comment.
Nick, we're having trouble with your mic, and it's not on our end because we can hear Molly clearly.
OK, I apologize, then, I did my sound checker.
Go back from your mic, you're too close to your mic, I think that's what's happening.
OK, is this any better?
It is.
Huh, OK. So the local law would be drafted and reviewed at your next workshop. If you're satisfied with a local law, you would introduce it, and then you would schedule a public hearing, refer to the two planning boards, county and city, for review and comment.
And don't move, because you're in the perfect spot for your acoustics.
Thank you.
Yeah, you know, I hear that there could be some issues with that, this, and so rather than legislate it, maybe we, again, allow discretion and let people look at it that's site-specific. Again, the planning board might tell us, you're not telling us enough to make a decision, but we'll kind of learn if that's where we're heading, and we'll adjust. Is that all right?
Yeah.
OK.
OK. Follow-up question, number six, is, does the city want to maintain the requirement of one parking space per accessory apartment? As the code stands, the planning board does have the ability to waive all parking requirements for an accessory apartment when deemed appropriate by the board.
I think I would consider keeping that as it is, so long as there is an outlet and a possible, you know, opportunity to waive the requirements after review.
Could the building inspector waive the requirement, Natalie? Some of these don't go to the planning board. Like, does, in the case, if, say you're developing an apartment in the envelope of the house, you're not changing anything on the outside, would this have to go to the planning board, then, for the, to not have a separate parking space?
I think it would, I'll punt to Nick, I think it would, just because there's no language in there giving that authority to the building inspector. So I think he would either send them to the ZBA, or the, I guess, ZBA to ask for a variance, or the planning board to ask for the waiver.
Correct, unless there was some criteria in the code that set forth what standard the building inspector would be deemed to have authority to waive the parking requirements. I don't know if it's one size fits all, so if it's more discretionary, then it would have to go to the planning board of the ZBA.
Well, I mean, I want you to think further down in your questions, you're asking about whether these shouldn't go to the planning board anymore and should just go to the building inspector. So maybe you revisit this about whether the building inspector has this authority once you determine that question. They're kind of, I would put the one before the other, maybe.
Yeah. And I guess, like, to clarify this, because I would be more in favor of not worrying about the parking requirement, so if I could ask a clarifying question, if somebody says, well, the street that I live on is a public street, and so thus there is parking, does that fulfill the parking requirement? So you have to have the space. See, where I get kind of wrapped up on this is, like, there's nothing that says that my, I can't have five cars in my one-car driveway and park all four of them on the public street. So why is this a requirement?
Because we got to get them off in the snow.
Yeah, I think right now, as the code reads, it does require that you have it on your site, so, you know, that is a, and then often what we see, you know, I've seen a few, you know, often for these single-family homes, they'll have, like, a large driveway or something like that, right? Where it's theoretically, you could probably fit three or four cars, they'll just have to have their engineer kind of, or whoever's preparing the plans for the site plan kind of show the dimensions of stalls then on their driveway to show that they can fit the required number of cars. But, Amber, I hear you, just because you have to provide the space on your site does not mean that that's where the tenant or you, as the primary homeowner, have to park all your cars.
Is the current requirement in the code for a single-family one, and then if there's an ADU, that would be another one? That's a good question.
Let me pull, I believe it's...
I think that's what we did. Because if the limit is two, because I think we, when we did parking, I think we let one in for a single-family. And so if an accessory unit would take, would require a second one, maybe one approach would be that if in the judgment of the building inspector, the site doesn't have two, then they could refer it to the planning board to see if they could waive it. But otherwise, if in their judgment there's two, they're done. Would that work? Again, that doesn't answer your question, right?
Yeah, I guess I just, I think having to go, if you have to go to the planning board for only this, to me, that is so silly.
So the alternative is yours, which is, how about one and not another one, right? Just the one, whatever the requirement is for a single family. What do others think, where we play?
I just think, and I agree to some extent, but I just think if you imagine that this is wildly successful and everyone is doing ADUs, and what kind of impact that might have on street parking in certain areas. So I think we'd kind of have to think of a lot of people doing this. And then, is it a problem that everybody's parking on the street? Maybe not, but in some areas it might be a problem.
Yeah, I think unfortunately, the situation, unfortunately, unfortunately, however you look at it, I think the situation that we have seen with many communities is that you are, we are not seeing the uptake of ADUs as was maybe once thought when these regulations were originally developed. I think there was a, you know, a thought that it would be hugely popular, and you could build one, there'd be one on every lot or every other lot, and you'd see them all over blocks, and to some neighborhoods, that really scared the neighbors, I think. And I think why you're seeing kind of in the second, third generation of accessory apartments or ADU regulations, a lot of municipalities trying to make it easier and easier, is we're finding that it's both just very costly and prohibitive to build these ADUs. So, you know, looking at Bruce's numbers, right, the city of Beacon has seen four in the past two years. I was talking with the housing planner in Kingston, they're also doing whatever they can to try and incentivize as many ADUs as possible, right? Because they're just not seeing, I think they have maybe four, none built yet, but four proposals that they've seen in the last year, with them permitting it everywhere and having a zero parking requirement. So, you know, I do hear you, because I think, yes, if it does really pick up trend and it somehow gets much more affordable to build these, and we start seeing them, then you do see that doubling of parking needs. Unfortunately, for housing production, we just haven't seen that trend with ADU development.
But it's something we could consider later, if we ask for nothing, and we realize two years down the road, we could change it.
Yeah. So are you proposing something?
Me? Yes, I agree with, leave, eliminate the required one parking space for...
The ADU.
For the ADU.
So the single family still has one, but it wouldn't require an additional one?
Correct.
Right? Everybody OK with that as our starting point, that we revisit?
I would add, I would only add to that, that if they're going to be above a certain size and we're sending it to the planning board, the version that we talked about before, they should also consider the parking requirements for that larger one.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Good point.
I think that's a good call.
Yeah, I'm OK with that.
Because, yeah, if it's over a certain size, and it's going to the planning board for that reason, then, yeah, I think that's a legitimate ask. And it's also going to be a project, it's expensive enough where, you know, the upfront costs will get passed, you know, through, right? Because it's a relatively big unit, it's going to rent for someone.
Mm-hmm.
OK.
I mean, I think the only thing I also want to state with that is, since we're retaining the owner occupancy requirement, right, this person is going to be living on this street and in, on this block, right, and having to share this, the amount of parking that is available either on street or on their site with their tenant. So I think now that we are still retaining the owner occupancy requirement, I think that does help, that should help people feel a little bit more comfortable that people are going to be self-managing or regulating in some way, too, because this is, this is their street, right, that they live on.
Yeah, good point.
Good.
OK, just three more. So number seven is, are the minimum setback requirements for accessory buildings, which are listed in the attachment three, which I included as part of my memo, are these appropriate for accessory apartments? And again, these apply to all accessory buildings on residential lots, so it could, you know, just keep it, keep that in mind, that these could be sheds and garages and other things. I did want to make a note that existing non-complying accessory structures are permitted to be utilized for accessory apartments without a variance from the ZBA. So we did stipulate that in the code, as long as the structure is not being further enlarged, or whatever the non-compliance issue is, if it's height or whatever, is not being increased. So there is, there is a little bit of a release valve there, right, that I believe, based on this language, that would still fall to the planning board? Or maybe, I guess that could, Nick, maybe you can weigh in on this. I guess it would be, if it's something that's subject to building permit approval, the building inspector could, could deem...
Right.
...is not, is not expanding, right? So it could be planning board, depending who is reviewing it, planning board or building inspector could say, OK, this building is non-complying, but it's not being increased, therefore they don't require a variance.
Correct, it'd be the building inspector's determination at that point.
OK, so what this would really apply to, then, would just be if someone is building a new structure, if they're doing a detached ADU, or if they're doing maybe in addition to the existing primary structure, that they would have to meet these setback requirements.
I think I struggled with this, when we were talking about this at the end of, I think, the 2021 term before the changes in 2022. And I just have a hard time, like, let's take just for example, the first row here, R1120. If somebody is required to have a minimum of a 50-yard rear and 50-yard side, does that then totally preclude them from having a unit? You know what I mean? Like, I can't quite figure out the math on it.
I just did the math.
OK.
So I did it with a R140, but let's do it with a R120. R120 is basically, it's 40,000 square feet per acre, right? So it's 40,000 square feet is 300 by 400.
OK.
That's, that gives you 120,000. If you take away 50 feet...
50 yards, right?
No.
Oh, OK, yeah, 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 got it, got it, OK.
These are all feet. But if you take away 50 feet... But if you take away 50 feet all the way around, I, I think I just did the calculation, you lose half the lot. I don't think it can't be that much. Let me just try to do the math again. It's 100 times.
Anyway, so that's my struggle with the setbacks, is I can't quite figure out what that actually leaves people to work with.
Yeah, I think, I think the setbacks for the larger properties don't make sense.
Okay.
And I, I think we should revisit those. I don't think we have to decide them tonight, but someone ought to do the calculation that Amber is asking, which is if you were to take away the setback, how much is left?
I can definitely do that. I can do little diagrams for each of these to kind of show, like, if you had a square-shaped lot, right? That fits within that lot requirement, what would that do? And then the other conversation, I think, would just be thinking about, let's look at that, let's start there with the, with a, you know, a traditional shaped lot. And then just think about some examples of where you get irregular shaped lots, but I think we can.
That would be super helpful. So I feel like I, I can't have an opinion on this right now, because I like can't visualize it, so.
I, I can do the math in plain, in plain English without any, any pencils. You got a 300 by 400 foot lot.
She's going to draw it out.
Right? You take away 50 on the 400, that leaves 300, because you take away 50 on either side. On the 300, you take away 50 on either side, that leaves 200. So what's left in the middle is a 200 by 300, that's 60,000 square feet. That's half of the 120,000. So the 50-foot setback in an R120 has taken out 50% of the building lot.
And they already have a building on the lot.
Yeah, that seems like it's too much.
Yeah, well, while we're talking about that, I think we should also look at the ones with the minimal setback of five feet, which means that someone could build a, a building 10 feet from your window. So I think we should look at that as well.
Yeah, so, so I think these are worth revisiting, right?
Yeah, and I think the, the visualization will be very helpful, at least for me, Natalie.
Yep.
Includes for sheds, right? Not just ADUs. I mean, I could see the ADU, a shed being.
Closer.
Yeah, but it's not, yeah, but it's not a person.
But not an ADU.
Not a window looking.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah. So I, I think we have a little bit of work on this piece, right? So Natalie, can you help us kind of visualize this?
Yep, will do, absolutely. So moving on to the next question, this is the one that Chris started discussing. So does the city wish to further streamline the approval process for accessory apartments? So right now, the city building inspector currently has the authority to issue permits for accessory apartments that are entirely contained within an existing family home, if all other provisions are met. Any apartment, accessory apartment requiring any kind of exterior addition, conversion of existing accessory buildings, or new accessory buildings, or new accessory buildings, all of that requires site plan approval from the planning board. So my question there is, should any of these typologies kind of be added to the list of types of accessory apartments that are permitted by the building inspector? So let's start there. If there's, and then I was going to say, if any of them do move to building inspector, are there kind of additional, additional stipulations or restrictions that we would want to place on those?
I, I would want to see more move to the authority of the building inspector. And, you know, I think about this in the way that, like, if you're doing renovations on your home, like, that's a building inspector approval. I think they have the, the knowledge and the ability to say whether something meets the provisions. And, and I think then if provisions are not met, you can go to the planning board. But if we enact these changes that we're talking about and all of the provisions are met, I feel like I would be comfortable with those at the building inspector. For anything that is outside of the provisions, then sure, maybe that needs to go to planning board.
Yeah, that second category, I could see as easing up. That's the direction that Amber is going. It could be some criteria like, if it's an accessory building, meaning a garage or something that you're building out, if it's nowhere near another house, why need a site plan? If it is near another house, then you might, because, you know, maybe it's too close to that other home in the next lot over or whatever. So maybe there's some criteria we could establish.
Like setbacks?
Yeah, like setbacks. We have to design those, right? But it's not only setbacks, it's setbacks and the existence of another home in the, close into that view, right? And maybe there's, maybe that's discretion of the building department, maybe we could write it, I'm not sure.
What, what kind of things would trigger neighbor notification?
Planning board, I think.
That would be the only, so only things that go to the planning board. So I'm just wondering if suddenly people might get, there might be buildings going up and they didn't know anything about it, and they have no say in the matter.
That, that wouldn't be unlike a single-family home being constructed, though.
Right.
If you're not going for a site plan. I mean, if you have a lot, you already have your, your, your lot lines where they need to be. You could just build a house with a building permit. So we're, I mean, it's, it's kind of like you're using one standard for one and.
No, I, I agree, that's true.
And that's not to argue what the answer is, I don't know what the answer is.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think fundamentally, I would like to see more things go to the planning, the, the building inspector. It might be helpful to get that person's input, whomever that may be. And, you know, maybe this is one that we might have to come back to as we get through the setbacks and some of the other specifics of determining, like, which of the typologies really should go to planning board and which are okay for building inspector sign off.
Nick, would it be legal to have certain, certain conditions that if they are present, they trigger the possibility of the building inspector referring it or requiring it to go to planning board? For instance, if you have another home in close proximity, or, you know, the building is a brand-new building that wasn't on the site, you know?
If we define in the code, what is the triggering point, then it's something that's mandatory and the building inspector's not in the middle and trying to exercise that discretion, then yes, we can build that into the code.
Okay.
So, so this sounds like the second area that we're going to have another go at, because it's connected to setbacks, right?
In, in my head, it is. I feel like it's connected to what we end up saying we're kind of allowing as of right. And then is there anything in that that we feel like, okay, these circumstances should go to planning board?
Yeah, even if there was no outside changes other than, you know, window or something. But if there was nothing changing of the walls, it could go to the building inspector. But I guess the minute you start adding an addition.
Well, that's already the case, Pam.
Yeah.
The only reason it would go to the planning board is you're expanding the unit. You're converting another, like a garage that's disconnected or detached from the house, or you're building a new structure.
The garage would need to go to the planning board?
It does need to go to planning board, unless, the, the one thing that we, we changed not so long ago, but a year ago, maybe a year and a half ago, is that if it's within the envelope of the existing building, you don't have to, of the primary residence. But any ancillary structure. So you could also split the baby and say, if there's already an ancillary structure and you're within that envelope, maybe that doesn't have to go to planning board.
Like, I think that's a really good use case for something that could be building inspector.
A whole new thing, maybe that warrants a review.
And then maybe that's where we get into some nuance of, if it's a new thing, but it meets all the provisions of the setback and the site requirements and the square footage, well, what do you need to go to planning board for? But if it's a new thing and there's some, I don't know, other criteria, like, the, the house next door to you is non-conforming and their side setback is only five yards, so now you're like right next to each other, maybe that's a planning board situation.
Yeah, so the one change is, is the, the main structure, right now, we're saying, if you change the, the envelope of the main structure, you go to planning. We could remove that, and as long as the main structure meets the setbacks, it would be a permitted home. So why not allow that one to go through without going to planning board? Then when you consider the accessory buildings, if there's an existing accessory building, you know, and it's a five-foot setback, if you build a, a unit there, that may interfere with that neighbor, right? Because it's not in the center of the lot like the main houses. So that might have criteria, not absolutely yes, not absolutely no, it might depend on what's around it.
Yeah.
That sounds good. So I have, I have, I think we can come back to it, but I think it sounds like maybe there's some categories that might be supportable, like an existing, existing accessory structure with like minor changes to windows and doors, right? If you already have a garage that's on the site and it meets the setback requirements, allowing that to be converted with just building inspector approval. And then potentially main structure expansions, primary structure expansions, as long as you are still meeting all the setback requirements, right? So technically, you could be expanding that house for your own single-family use.
That would be allowed.
Right, in the same way. So now you're just expanding it, but you're putting accessory apartment in there, maybe allowing that to be permitted with just the building permit as well. And I think as we maybe start to formalize some of the other regulations, we'll see if there's other categories that pop up. But right now, it sounds like if you're doing a new, well, the one we haven't really talked about is like, if you're doing a new accessory structure that is detached from your primary, say it meets all the, all the setback requirements, right? Whatever we decide those are, it meets setback requirements. Does the council feel like that's something that could also just be building inspector? Or do we want to keep new structures that are detached? As something that goes to the site plan approval?
I'd like to come back to that. I, I feel like maybe, but need to think about it a little bit. And I want to think about things, not only like setback, but what about height?
Yeah.
So there's, I think there's a little bit more in that, in that use case that I think it's a maybe.
Yep, sounds good. Okay, so jumping to the last one is, and this kind of gets.
Just, just go back to height. I just, I mean, right now, that's, that's legislated by the building code as it exists.
Yeah.
Okay, and that would apply to anything, any ADUs.
Nick?
Right, so it's, the height would apply to both structures as well, but it's no separate height requirement for the ADU.
Okay.
So the last question is, should the city provide financial incentives such as fee reductions for accessory apartments? So I think that kind of pulls us back to Bruce's letter, where he kind of talked through some of the costs, right? So application fee for the planning board, or application fee for an accessory apartment is $750. The escrow you have to establish is 3,000. So just kind of coming in out the gate, if you have an application for an accessory apartment, $3,750. That is for applying. You also, if you're going before the planning board, you do require usually engineer or architect or someone to be doing these drawings for you to kind of meet the requirements. So I think Bruce did estimate that that often costs between 5,000 and 10,000 dollars. And all of this is prior to the actual cost of constructing these units.
Is it? Oh, sorry, Natalie, is it possible to tie the fee reduction to the plus-one program if we were to consider a fee reduction?
That's Nick.
No, because you're, I'll give that some more fall. My initial reaction is no, because it's related to the categories of ADUs. And why are you distinguishing between those that are in the plus-one versus those that, for some reason, may not qualify for plus-one?
Could we do it a different way by having something that would run concurrently with the administration of the grant and then sunset?
That's what I'm thinking, Chris, yes. If we tied directly somehow to our administration of it, yes.
Yeah, okay.
I think we can get there, if you want to go there.
Well, yeah, and the, the reason that I'm asking that is because, part of why I think we should look at this is because of the plus-one program and to let people take advantage of that. And that is income-based, I believe, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so.
100% of area and median income or less.
Yeah, so to me, kind of tying a reduction in fees to this income-based program, in my head, that makes sense. But I don't know what others think.
The only thing we have control over is the application fee and the escrow amount. Regardless, would they have to have a, whether it's going to go through the building department or the planning board, they would still have to have an architect do drawings?
Yeah, I believe Bruce has stated that for the building permit, plans by an architect or engineer are required. So this is something that we saw in city of Kingston that they did. They, they've had two rounds of the plus-one ADU program, and they used some of that funding, or they pulled together funding to do standard plans. So they, they hired an architecture firm to kind of draft some model ADU plan sets that then were downloadable and could be used. So if you kind of wanted to do, if you weren't trying to do a, a unique ADU, if you just wanted a standard kind of unit, you could download the plans for free, and those could be your plans that you would then just have to kind of cite on your lot. But, yeah, you do, you are going to require those plans to get a building permit to be, to show that you're meeting building code.
These aren't going to be huge. The, the fees that we control, like the fee based on the square footage for new construction, that could be waived, but that's not the principal thing here. The, one of the drivers is getting the professionals to do, you know, signed engineered plans.
And we have no control over that.
Unless, unless you allow that through, I don't know, do you need, if, I guess, think of the question, if you have a garage, for instance, and you're converting it and you have a contractor who can do that and will say, yeah, this is in good enough shape, do you need an architect? If you're not changing any walls, if you're, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, I think there's a lot that an architect provides in terms of, you know, structural stuff, safety issues, basic building codes, that, you know, most, most builders, experienced builders will know that, but who becomes liable if it's not done exactly like that? I guess the building.
That's the best argument, yeah.
And certainly by requiring it to go just to the building permit stage instead of the planning board, you're removing from the planning board stage that application fee, the escrow and the engineering fees for the applicant for their site plan preparation. So that's where you're getting your most significant savings in terms of the cost.
And, and just, you know, we, we need to be cognizant, if we waive the escrow fee, it doesn't go away. We still pay the planner, the city engineer, and the city attorney.
Right, only goes away if you don't require a planning board approval.
Right.
So it sounds like we're doing enough work to eliminate going to planning board in most cases. And so when you do have to go, it's for a reason. And so I'm, I'm okay leaving the fees, because we're, we're basically getting rid of site plan and therefore fees in most of the other cases.
Okay.
I, I think we should also look into what Kingston did and, and see if we can have some established plans, maybe ask Kingston to have theirs. It's all New York State code. So I think some people might opt to just go for a off-the-shelf design without paying any architect.
I'm, I'm worried about our capacity to do that. Kingston has a whole planning department. It has an in-house city engineer with multiple staff. We have neither of those. We're a lot smaller than Kingston in, in the scope of what we do.
Yeah, but I'm just saying, if, say Kingston, they've already have these, you know, drawings made, would they be willing to share those? Those, those would just be in the package of ADU, you know?
We, we could share them, I wouldn't want to, I wouldn't want to put our name behind them. I don't, we haven't vetted them and.
Right, and we'd have to see if we have the, if Kingston has rights to assign those plans.
Yeah, I think, Nick, did you send Boston's to us?
I, I sent that.
You did, okay.
No.
This might, this is really something maybe Hudson River Housing could work on. If they're going to do this across eight municipalities, you know, again, that might provide the, the economy of scale.
For the county.
To do it, and I can suggest that to them when we have the kickoff and, and see, because, I mean, I think they're going to struggle to get the 40-plus units that they're going to try to build. People aren't taking these up that quickly, we've seen.
Well, a lot of it is financially, you know, if they do have to put a lot of money out initially, some people don't even have that money to put out initially to be able to help them afford their house in a little while, you know, it's. You know, it's, it's a huge amount.
But it's also the nature of a single family home. A lot of people that move to a single family home want a single family home. They don't necessarily want to share it with somebody who's going to be sharing a wall or a driveway or a yard.
But if financially they were strapped that they feel they, they need to do something, they just can't afford to do this.
Yeah, I mean, that's why we're doing it. So the people that don't have that concern. I can talk to Hudson River Housing because that, that would be something that I think they would want to do for all of their municipalities.
Yeah.
Maybe the county, they can get the county to help with it because they definitely have more expertise. I don't have much in-house to work with on this.
Yeah, no, I understand that.
I like the scale of that idea. I think that the uncertainty, the confusion is preventing the uptake of the program. So if there was something where there was a limited number of even modular designs that could reduce the decision-making hurdles that was vetted. So I think that's something we should look into, not supporting necessarily, but doing what we can to encourage another entity.
That's all really helpful feedback. So I think we have some good direction with these. So we can come back with, I think, some diagrams to help visualize the setback requirements and things like that. And I think we can come up with a draft language for the other sections that we had more resolute kind of discussions about. So appreciate you guys' time in walking through this and we'll come back to you with some draft legislation to consider.
And I'll reach out to the Department of Planning and Development and see if this is something they might be willing to take on as part of their housing affordability.
What a great idea.
Like Boston is, is a big city and that has a lot of resources. Duchess is probably smaller in population by, by some, but they have, might have the resources to do it.
That's great, thanks.
Thank you. So, next one is also zoning issue. And, which is on East Main. So there is an issue that was brought to our attention. And is it Natalie or Nick? You want to talk through this one or not? Which one have you?
I think Natalie is because it's more of the planning and zoning aspect. But you do have in your agenda packet, the building inspectors of Bruce's memo from February 5th, as well as his zoning diagram, zoning chart that goes through an area where he suggests it would be appropriate for the council to consider. And again, this is the first step. No decisions have been made. We haven't drafted a local law. It's just here for the initial discussion and this would be the first step for the council to consider if it wishes to consider rezoning along the East Main Street parcels as indicated in Bruce's memorandum. And he's really had noticed there's a change in the use where it might be more appropriate for some of these properties to be relocated into the CMS zone. And so Bruce has attached the map and the zoning use charts for those two districts for the council to consider whether this is something you wish to advance for the preparation of a local law at which would be referred to the county and city planning boards and a public hearing scheduled to receive public input. And you would be zoning particular properties.
Is, is there background on why this is coming up?
This came up because of One East Main Street Tracks Coffee House wasn't in compliance with the current zoning. And I'm, I don't know all the details on it, but that's, that was the genesis of it.
Oh, really? Okay.
So the, someone else is buying it and I, it was, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, Nick. It was LI and it's really for, it limited whether you could have seating in a coffee house for some reason.
Interesting.
Help me out here.
Yeah, so I think the coffee grinding was an LI use, light industry.
Right, but you, it limited how many seats you could have in there for a coffee house. So like in thinking about particularly that one property, I don't know if this logic would extend behind it because you already have some pushback from Hudson Valley Brewery because they really are LI. But along the future rail trail, it might be worth considering additional uses in that property.
Yeah, I guess I would, that's interesting that that's a current issue and you kind of wonder like how they, how they ended up as a business if they weren't a permitted use.
I think they kept it below a certain number of seats.
Okay.
It came out recently because they're doing renovations, they're selling.
Okay, yeah, I mean, understanding some of the concerns around like the light industrial aspects of Seven East Main, I feel like maybe it's not worth opening that up at this point, but doing it for One East Main. I'm curious as to why both were, were considered.
Excuse me, sorry.
I assume it, I, I appreciate, I had the same question, Amber. And I assume one of the reasons that whole block came up is also because the parking lot is apparently also non-conforming for LI. And so if we wanted to consider updates to that parking lot and future uses of it for other parking needs, that that is also limited in its current zoning. It's my understanding if I'm reading the table correctly.
Well, it's a governmental use which is permitted in any district, so that's not, it's not a private parking lot.
You need to move back from your mic again.
Sorry, it's a governmental use which is permitted, so it's, it's not a private parking lot.
Okay.
Stay right there.
So if we were to build a governmental parking structure there, that would be okay?
Correct.
Okay, great.
So this is interesting. So let me ask the question. The LI use that is in that, which is the brewery, is that permitted in CMS?
It's permitted in both places.
Yes. Brew, bar, brew pub, micro brewery, micro distillery are permitted in both CMS and LI.
Okay, so that would say the brewery on that site wouldn't, shouldn't have a problem going one way or the other. It's be a matter of communication, is that right?
They may be concerned if it's considered manufacturing use. Like I, I guess it does because they're wholesale of their products.
They may not be a, maybe that's what you're getting at, as a, they may not be a micro brewery.
Microbrewery.
Yeah.
You could limit it to One East Main. I mean, that was, you're trying to fix something bigger than was the problem.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, so one option is to allow such uses in the CMS. Another option would be to, you know, leave the brewery in LI, move the One East Main building into CMS. Nick, Natalie, is there an option where we could say properties, you know, budding the creek have the option of CMS or LI zoning? Are we allowed to do something like that?
So I've seen in some zoning codes, right, where you do allow different regulations to apply within, if you're within X number of feet of a particular zoning district or defining feature. Not best practices because it can be confusing.
Yeah, I think it's kind of generally referred to as, as a little bit of a floating district, right? Where it gets, it gets pulled down upon request by the property owner. But I don't know.
So it had to do with the multifamily housing, I guess, that they're limited in the LI to artist live work. And that's, that's kind of like, yeah, I'm an artist. I'm living there and working.
Yeah.
Where's your art? I don't know.
And that's supposed to be inspected as well, isn't it?
Yeah, so that was, I'm now remembering like that's not inspected. It's not just artists. So you're really out of conformance on One East Main. That was the only problem. We weren't trying to do, I think he included Seven East Main and Churchill parking lot because they were also LI. But the, the issue was the one.
I'd be okay, oh, sorry Pam, go ahead.
I was just, it does make sense, like when you look at the map and you're like, oh yeah, just change it all. And I could understand it where they were talking of the future rail trail. I think some of it might just be communication and just confirming the uses where I think it might not be even an issue to go to CMS if it turns out that the current uses there on all those properties are allowed in the CMS zone.
Yeah, and I was just going to say, I mean, I feel like if the, the challenge that we're trying to address is at One East Main, like let's just take care of One East Main and then like not worry about the, especially because I'm, I'm thinking that One East Main must have some urgency behind it because of the sale. And so I, I would say like, okay, let's figure that out and just leave Seven East Main out of it for now. If we do need to address it when the rail trail comes around, like totally agree, we have to make sure that, you know, the, the distillery brewery distinction still works for the use that's there. But it just feels like we're making this bigger than it has to be.
I mean, but it looked like it made sense to me.
Yeah, yeah.
Seemed like an easy fix.
And, and we didn't want to get in the business of trying to figure out who's an artist and working and living in this space.
I mean, there's nothing counterproductive or counter to the original intent in reversing that artist live workspace that we'd, we'd be doing. I mean, is it?
Those, those are condos at this point. I mean, you, how are you, how do you regulate that?
So it's basically the horse is out of the barn already.
I think somebody made a mistake some years ago.
And the horse is out of the barn.
Sounds like it.
And there's no way, there's nothing we can do in terms of a requirement that would affect the affordability of any of those spaces at this point in time?
I, I wouldn't deem that many of them are affordable at this time.
In terms of communication, as, as this advances, do we reach out, do we send something to the tenants, all the tenants and the owners of those units about rezoning changes?
They'd get a notice, right?
Yeah, I think they get a notice.
There'd be a public hearing, honestly.
Nick, would the impacted owners in the One East Main get a notice?
The owners would, but the tenants would not. We, we notice goes to the, the owners of the properties on record with the city assessor. And then there's of course, public notice on the city's website.
But if they're condos, they'd get the notice because their own.
Your owner.
Correct, correct.
Got it.
And even the, the, the commercial units are condoized.
Oh, okay.
So I, I, I'm with Amber in that, look, there's a quick fix, let's do that. But I just want to put on the table that there is a, a medium term issue that we should address, which is that our zones assumed our old city where, you know, oh, next to the creek, that's industrial. Main Street, no, it, it doesn't, it doesn't get anywhere near the creek because there's a train tracks there. And nobody has, you know, Main Street style buildings on the other side of the tracks. That's all gone. And it, which is wonderful, right? Because, because we're breaking that barrier of the tracks. I'd just like us to be looking at our uses by districts. And I think the medium term issue is we may consolidate our districts and simplify our uses into broader categories. Right? So we don't have to worry about, is it a, what kind of distillery is a, is it this kind, is it this size? It's just like anything that's a brewery or a bar or a distillery is okay, right? And if it's on Main Street, they have to be willing to pay top dollar for it, which would probably limit the size of it. But anyway, that, I think is for another day.
Curious about the parking lot, though. You said it's a government use. It's currently?
It's a municipal lot.
Yeah.
The, the, the one to the south.
On Churchill.
Yeah, on Churchill.
So between Churchill and Hudson Valley Brewery is one of our public lots.
So it's a city owned municipal lot and no change needs to happen to allow it to continue?
We're good.
Correct, because in your table of uses, a governmental facility is permitted and they permitted use in all districts.
If, if you wanted to redevelop that, which was a proposal some years ago under John Clark, then you might want to look at your zoning. I, I don't see any plans in the next five years to do that, honestly.
Right, remember we have on our long-term to-do list, the potential building on top of parking lots. This wouldn't be our first choice, but.
Yeah, that's, that's not my first choice either.
So is the next step that someone should propose, what's the quick fix? Or do we already know what that is?
Nick can draft it up. If you just want to move, move, move the zoning, you're changing the zone.
Okay.
The zoning.
Just for One East Main, right? Yeah.
Right, the adjoining property is CMS, so we would just be extending the CMS to the One East Main Street property.
Okay, that works. Everybody good?
Yes.
Okay, two down. Oh, LoSAP, we have length of service awards. This is for our volunteer firefighters. Chris?
Yeah, so we do this every year where you certify the hours and the credits that volunteers have received. For, for people tuning in, LoSAP is length of service award program. It was an incentive for volunteer firefighters so that for each year you earned, you got a contribution towards a defined benefit plan when you turn 55. So for our program, you earn $20 a month for life after age 55 for each year that you record up to 20 years. As, as you know from talking to the fire chief, we're down to just a handful of active volunteers. So there really was only a few people that earned any credits this year, but nonetheless, we have to certify that. You really have only three members at this point that earned points and you have to have 50 points to earn a year. I just want to let you know, we, we are still spending money on this because we have 53 people on the system already. So we do spend, we allocated $57,000 in the budget this year, just so you have an idea. You know, we're, we're going to carry those costs probably for, you know, another several decades. And, and again, we don't have a lot of new volunteers coming on because of the training requirements and, and the time constraints. So this is just to certify this, we've done this every year and then.
So it looks like your list is saying there are five that have maxed out that are still active and three that have not maxed out and are getting credits. And then, and then the rest of the list is all getting payouts today.
I, I don't think that's totally accurate, but you're close.
Okay.
Yeah.
In the ballpark. Remove the numbers.
Some, some of them who have maxed out are not active still.
Oh, okay.
Yes, they, but they've maxed out.
Okay.
Got it. Yeah, I don't know the difference between entitled and vested.
So I do. Entitled means that you've earned your credit and you're over 55. Vested means you've earned the credit to be eligible, but you haven't hit age.
Thank you.
Yes. So and we have a, you know, we have a portfolio of investments that are managed for this to pay. It, it's kind of like a mini retirement system from New York State. And it's, it's very modest. The most they get a year is $4,800. So if we do recruit new volunteers, which we hope to get some good ones, they would also be in the program if they make a certain number of calls each year.
Everybody good? All right. So the next one is the appointment of Brian Murphy to building inspector. That's the guy who's sitting over there. Chris is going to introduce him and he's been listening to us talk about zoning, so it's probably good.
Well, I'm delighted to have Brian Murphy here with us tonight. I just wanted to give a little background for those tuning in. This position is building inspector two. The council had asked why it's not building inspector one. That really is a classification based on your population. So if you have over 10,000 residents, you're building inspector two. And then civil service has a title both for, one for towns and one for cities. So this is for the city. Our building department currently is five people. It's a building ins, building inspector two, two deputy building inspectors and two support staff, which are classified as municipal secretaries. The position that we're hiring for came about because Bruce Flower, who came to work for us in September 2022, went in early February to work for the town of Poughkeepsie. We pulled the list from civil service, which is a certification of eligibles. It's the people that took the test specifically for this position. We ended up interviewing the two highest scoring people, one of which was Brian. And we've, we've did a subsequent interview with Brian, which also included having our current deputy building inspectors take him around town, show him the development, talk to him about what he had done. They were very comfortable with that. So Bruce, Sarah and I all interviewed him. The mayor came in briefly for part of the interview. And we have, we, we would like to offer him the job and bring to you his appointment. He's, he's going to talk about his background a little bit. And then we also have scheduled an executive session so we can have a little bit more candid conversation, which we do for building, which we do for department heads. So again, we didn't want to have necessarily the, the hiring interview in public, but at least we wanted to introduce Brian and, and let him talk a little bit. Brian and let him talk a little bit about his background and what he's, he's bringing to the city of Beacon. So with that, I'd, I'd introduce Brian and welcome to the city of Beacon.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council and members of the Beacon community. My name is Brian Murphy and I'm here to, I, I have, I, I bought it. My name is Brian Murphy and I have been participating in the application process to represent the city of Beacon in the position of building inspector two. Thank you for taking your time this evening to have me here for the consideration of joining the department and to begin contributing to the team. A little bit about my experience. My experience, I was a small business owner. I owned a construction company previously. Prior to that, I had sat on the Village of Wapinners Falls zoning board for three years. Prior to, or, I sat on the zoning board of the Village of Wapinners Falls. I've been the building inspector for the zoning of, or for the building of, I've been the building inspector for the Village of Wapinners Falls for the last 13 years. Phew, sorry about that. And then I've been the building inspector for the next 13 years. The work includes working very closely with the planning boards and the zoning boards. As the building inspector of the village, I'm also the manager of the department. And I have extensive technical skills in municity five, which the city of Beacon currently uses for their building permit. And also laser, laser feature cloud is the records retention for the Village of Wapinners and the city of Beacon also uses it. Much to the akin to the responsibilities outlined in the city of Beacon building inspector position, my present job includes supervising and participation in the inspections of construction and repair of buildings and structures, including plumbing installations, the enforcement of the provisions of the Uniform Fire Prevention Code of New York State, all zoning and plumbing ordinances and the multiple residence law. Additionally, I'm also responsible, responsible for reviewing and approving or disapproving all building permit plans and specifications submitted with applications for local building and plumbing permits. As the zoning administrator for the Village of Wapinners Falls, we review all site plan submissions along with planning board applications, sign permit applications, special use permit applications and any other building and planning board applications that are submitted. I have the experience with the Village of Wapinners Falls, like I said, for the last 13 years. I am also their floodplain coordinator, their fire inspector, the building inspector, like I said earlier, the zoning administrator. And that was it for the experiences with the Village of Wapinners Falls. I feel that as a lifelong member of the Hudson Valley, the similarities to our two adjoining communities are many. Much like Beacon, the Village of Wapinners Falls has many historical buildings that require special attention and consideration for either remodel, construction or just management. Along, along with supporting smaller businesses with densely populated parts of our communities. That would be the introduction to my thing.
Thank you.
I apologize for stumbling a little bit.
That's okay, thank you. Yeah, so did, what, um, did, did we want to move into executive session or was there anything else?
Proposed to do was to, you know, introduce Brian in public so that we could vote next week and then we, if, if you want to move to executive session, then we can have kind of a more candid conversation. We, we do try to avoid having, you know, like HR conversations in public.
Yes. Okay.
Nick, did you have anything?
Thank you, Chris. I was just going to repeat what you said and also with respect to disposition concerning, it's about interpretations, determinations and enforcement, it's best held in executive session.
Okay.
All right. Is, are people interested in that? I mean, I've interviewed the person, so I'm good, so it's up to you all.
I mean, I, I generally don't really think I have any specific questions, but.
We put it on there just in case.
I'm happy if, if, if others do, yeah.
I'll try to deal with my, my wounded pride if you don't do an executive session. I think I could get over it, though.
The only question, and I don't believe it's going to be an HR question, but you, on your resume, you talked about digital archiving of building department records. And I understand that we have, we've recently purchased a scanner of some sort.
We didn't purchase it yet and he had a better idea.
Oh.
They, they actually rented one there, which makes a lot of sense because, sorry.
We, we, so we, we like the city of Beacon. We had many blueprints from long ago and many original copies of people's files. So we were able to find a company called Hartford, Hartford out of Long Island, that you're able to rent large, large formatted scanners. At that time it was $485 a month. We didn't want to purchase it because eventually we were going to run out of its use since we now require everything to be electronic. So that was the reasoning behind the rental. It was a, a great company that we found, came with the software.
No, that's great.
So when Brian raised that, we're like, aha, we don't have to buy a $6,000 piece of equipment and store it for the rest of time.
That we probably only need to use for, you know, not for ever and ever. Yeah, well, what a good idea.
Software, they came, I believe we had it for like eight months and they came in, like four months and cleaned it and everything for, it was part, part of their maintenance agreement with us. The software was quite easy. Because it is a large machine in smaller offices. They, they, it's the one that the village had rented. It's large. It took up quite a bit of room, but we just knew it was there temporarily, so it worked out really well for us.
Well, that's great. I'm glad you're familiar with this process and recognize the importance of it as well, so that's great.
Then the rest of the archive, and we had many filing cabinets of what I would know as original files to properties. And slowly we would just start scanning one or two of them in, or if you were in that file for a reason, we would pull it and make it a point to now scan it into our server and laser feature cloud, which was our records retention. So it worked, it's been working out. We're not done. But it's working out very well. Again, a lot digitalized. And then now we also require all submitted, we try at least all submitted to be electronically submitted.
We're doing that now. There's one page you have to have signed and the rest is all digital.
Yes, that's, us also, you know, you do have to sign the permit application and for some, you know, it's hard to either do it, do it digitally or digitally sign it. So we do get some papers that are, we do get some hard copies also, then we just scan them.
I did notice you were a fellow Spartan, so.
Yes, I am.
I was a little before you.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
I don't want to belabor the discussions, but maybe, I don't know if it's an HR question, but I am curious about advanced building techniques. I know we have an advanced energy code that we adopted here in the city. You know, I'm just, was this part of the discussions in the interview?
It wasn't, so you want to address that?
Being the, the stretch code you're referring to?
Yep, you know, familiar with the stretch code. It's, you know, it's, it's, there's a, you know, you know very well that the code is an ever evolving process, so.
Absolutely, I do.
Yeah, so I'm curious about your experience, like with, with the, the cutting edge of the building code more generally across all the, the nine chapters, in particular the energy code. But, you know, fostering kind of a broader education for what we could ask for here in Beacon amongst other inspectors. So I'm curious about your, that experience.
Yeah, I, I'm pretty well versed on the energy code. The Village of Wapinners has not adopted the stretch code, so I have not worked with it that much, but I have quite a bit of training in the energy code itself.
And our guys told them about our electrification law, that we, you know, all new development has to be electric except for a few exemptions.
And Beacon was considering the zero energy code as well too at one point in time. I'm not sure where that stands in the process, but it is a forward leaning city, so just wanted, just gauge your comfort with that.
And thank you. I was aware of that. So I, I started looking in NYSERDA that there are many stretch code, you know, webinars and things like that that you can go, go back to and watch and even going forwards, getting to all the training and that's absolutely what I would do. You know, yeah, because there aren't too many companies that I know of that have adopted the stretch around here.
I don't think the town of Wapinners had, right, which is where Bruce came from.
I'm, I'm sorry, Leah, I didn't hear you.
Yeah, I don't think town of Wapinners, town of Poughkeepsie, sorry, where Bruce came from, had adopted stretch code either. I think we were one of few.
I think you are one of the few that have adopted that.
Yeah, well, and of course, when we adopted it, our building inspector at the time had to learn it as well, so it's certainly not, you know, certainly not impossible.
Yeah, no, it's not. I mean, you, you know, it's above and beyond the regular energy code, but, you know, there, there's quite a bit of training out there that, that's available, you know, and I'm certainly willing to, to do it. You know, I mean, we're required to keep a certain amount of training every year anyway.
And you, you're an important resource for the builders that might be complying with it too. So that's a really important aspect of the job, particularly around this. I'm nerding out, but I helped develop the energy stretch code.
Oh, do, oh, okay. Excellent. No, I'd certainly be interested, you know, like I said, started looking it up once I realized that you guys were, were stretch code. Started doing a little bit of research. Like I said, NYSERDA has a lot of, looks to be great classes, you know, recorded webinars and everything along those lines out there.
Yeah, so you're discovering in our conversation this evening, we have energy code geeks and we have zoning geeks and it's an interesting council because of it, right?
That's great. It's, it's an involved council is what it is and that's, that's an excellent thing.
Yeah, I, I actually think it means that we're going to be very supportive.
Yeah, but I was going to sound like a wealth of information that hopefully, you know, I could tap into if need be.
Of course.
Excellent.
And Mayor, if I could just highlight and thank Corey Worthman for filling in as acting building direct, building inspector. He's been doing a fantastic job. Corey was not on the list of eligibles. He didn't take the test because he didn't know Bruce was leaving. But I think he's happy with our choice, as was the other deputy building inspector. And if you're ready, we would love to bring him to council next week and so that he can give his notice to the Village of Wapinners.
Yeah, I'm happy to move forward.
And I'll also note his, his references were absolutely glowing.
Wonderful.
I would have said that in executive session, but let's say it out loud now.
Okay, well, great.
Anything else, folks?
I guess we don't need executive session.
No, I'll make them, oh, well, next meeting, yeah.
So let me announce the next meeting, which is next Monday, March 3rd at seven o'clock. It will be an official council meeting in this site and now.
A motion to adjourn.
Second.
So Amber and Pam, all in favor? Thank you all.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you, Chris, for the reminder. I'll step away from the mic.
All right.